I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, December the 4th, 2017. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Jeff Pennington of the First Baptist Church, who will come forward this time, give our invocation, and also lead us in the pledge to the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Amen. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for tonight, and thank you for your constant provision and care and love, and just the privilege that you've granted each of us to be a part of this tremendous city. Lord, I thank you for all the leaders that we have before me today. I thank you for their faithfulness. I thank you for the way that they lead with humility and with wisdom, and I pray that you'll continue to lavish them with those qualities as they forge ahead into the future. And Lord, I just pray for your blessing on this meeting tonight, as we close out this year, draw near its end, that, Lord, you'll just give us just a tremendous ending to a great year in the life of our community, and we look forward with great anticipation of what is to come in the future. So we give you the glory for it all in Christ, and we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff, and for those folks that are maybe new to town or for looking for a new place to go and worship, the folks at I'm sure First Baptist Church in Smyrna, which is right at the front door and hanging right, first church on the left. I also want to remind everyone that there is an election tomorrow for the council seat in Ward III. We have been without a council member for a couple of months now, so hopefully on the 18th, we'll have a new council member, and we'll have a full staff of elected officials. Agenda changes. We do not have any under the mayor's report. We just got through recognizing a number of students, volunteers, and teachers under the mayor's education award. We're happy to do that twice a year. We also have the Smyrna Education Foundation report, which is going to be presented tonight. And are you by yourself? Oh, yeah. No, how insulting is that?
Thank you very much, Mayor Bacon. Thank you, council, for having us here tonight. I'm Kathy Young, and I'm with the Smyrna Education Foundation. I think I've met most of you, all of you, really. I have three other members of our board here tonight, I think. Yes. So we have Cara Gold, Alicia McLaughlin, and Jennifer Bennett, who you all know well. And I just wanted to, very quickly, because we've had a lot of education discussion tonight, which was humbling to follow, but remind everyone that we're here in the community to promote elementary and secondary education, to promote the idea that the schools are achieving high levels, but they need our advocacy, they need our support, they need research, education. And so as an organization, we were founded in 2011 to help further those ideas and to help further that mission. And so we work alongside the schools, we work alongside the administrators, and the volunteers, and the teachers. And since 2011, we've been able to award over $46,000 in grants. We're in the middle of a cycle right now. We have over half of our schools have responded, and by this Friday, hopefully, all of our schools will have responded. And we've also been able to leverage over $70,000 in additional funding and materials in those years as well. We don't proactively fundraise, but we do receive generous support from a number of organizations, a number of businesses. And one of the reasons we do not actively fundraise is because we don't want to compete with our schools. But anytime anyone wants to support all of the schools, we will happily receive a check and then distribute it back out. But JRM has been a great supporter, the city has been a great supporter, Food Truck Tuesday has been very helpful. This year, we were able to leverage some additional support through Constellation Energy, and we were able to get a $500 grant for Campbell High School's uniforms, which was great. So we're always looking for ways to help the schools in those different ways. We prepared a little bit of information, because, again, you've heard a lot tonight, those of you who are here for all the awards, but there's a few highlights that we'd like to share with you. We're going to give you those folders. If you ever have any questions or ever have anyone that wants to connect with us, please let us know. We're happy to help connect them to their school or their schools in general. The schools can always use your support as well. Susan, thank you so much. We know you were at Belmont Hills recently for an event that the city actually organized. That was an excellent opportunity to bring folks together, talk about early kindergarten and some other activities that they're doing at their school. So all of those activities, they're out there on Facebook, they're on the Wave of Excellence, if you're on that grassroots organization page. You can sign up. School tours are great. You all know a ton about the schools. Please help spread the message that they're doing great things. Green Acres just achieved the second highest increase in the CCRP scores this year in Cobb County. Amazing. We're so proud of them. All the schools really are doing great things, and we just appreciate your support and appreciate being here tonight. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer some as well.
Cara can answer them, right?
Cara can answer everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For what y'all do for our schools.
Can we bring these up?
Sure can, yeah. That's the only thing under the mayor's report. I don't know if there's any candidates out there that will be on the ballot tomorrow that would like to speak. If you want to, you can come at this time. I don't see any. Of course, I can't see that far, so. All right. Who is it? Marilyn, I didn't see you. Hold on. I got these 60s glasses out.
Well, good evening, mayor and council. My name's Marilyn Blackburn. And of course, I've been a Smyrna resident for 17 years. And I am running to fill the seat in which our dear Terry Anilowitz has vacated. So tomorrow's a big election, and I'm just encouraging everyone to get out and vote. And if you so choose to, just check my name on that ballot. Have a great evening.
And what time are the polls open to?
Let me see.
Seven to seven?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
And the voting place is?
The community center.
Community center?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terry, do you want to say anything while we're on that subject?
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to. We will be holding the runoff election, for the special election for Ward III in the community center. We will also, the other election is for the senate seat, District 6. And that will happen in the community center and all of the other precincts. But the polls are open from 7:00 to 7:00, as Marilyn indicated, and everybody just come out and vote. We need as many voters as we can get.
So in case you didn't vote in the first election, you can vote in this runoff election. Is that correct?
Yes. Oh, yes, yes. If you didn't vote at the first, you can vote in this election, as long as you're registered to vote. Yes.
Good deal. Under item four is land issues only. It's an annexation. We don't have anything on that issue. Item five is previous license. We have nothing under that. Item six is formal business. A is Resolution 2017-21. Approved to adopt Resolution 2017-21 is supported the city's pre-application to the recreational trails program grant administered by the Department of Natural Resources and authorized the mayor to execute all related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The city of Smyrna is applying for the recreational trails program grant being administered by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, with funds distributed by the Federal Highway Administration. The grant is being pursued in order to develop the first phase of a mountain bike park at North Cooper Lake Park. The grant is an 80% 20% reimbursement grant, which means that the city will pay for the full cost of the project and be reimbursed 80% up to $200,000. The matching 20% is equivalent to $50,000 and can consist of direct expenses, volunteer hours, or in-kind donations. The pre-application requires a resolution of support by the mayor and city council. The pre-application is due January 2nd, 2018. The outcome of the pre-application process will be announced in April of 2018.
This is under Ms. Susan Wilkinson's Parks and Recreation Committee. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, your honor. Well, at this time, I was going to ask Maxwell Rupersberg to come, if he would like to come say a few things about the grant and about the park and what's being looked at or studied. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. So the grant, again, is through the Department of Natural Resources, and it comes from funds from the Federal Highway Administration. We can apply for up to $200,000 from the Department of Natural Resources, so we are pursuing the maximum amount. The grant, actually, they divide the amount of money they can give into three categories across the state. So there are multi-use trails, single-purpose trails, and motorized recreational trails. And my colleague, Ashley Yeomans, and I attended a workshop on, you know, applying for this grant. And our category is one of the less competitive categories, the single-use trail. The Parks and Recreation Department sought the help of a design firm, and so we have a conceptual plan that lays out currently three to five miles of trails that will be at North Cooper Lake Park. It is natural surface trails. There will also be a beginner-level course that's on the flat area surrounded by the sidewalk loop, and that'll be next to the children's playground that's being installed at the park. It's a pretty involved application, but we have had good luck with collecting all the information. We had a public input process last month, got a lot of good feedback. You know, the Parks Master Plan has also indicated that natural trails are one of the biggest priorities for citizens. And again, we'll get this in January 2nd, and we will hear back in April, but we are very hopeful. So thank you.
At this time, I would like to move to approve item 6A, Resolution 2017-21. Approval to adopt Resolution 2017-21 in support of the city's pre-application to the recreational trails program grant administered by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources and authorized the mayor to execute all related documents.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Welch, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Thank you very much. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the November 20th, 2017, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the November 20th, 2017, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the November 16th, 2017, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Should be. Item D, approval of use of council chambers for Ward I neighborhood meeting, Tuesday, December 12th, 2017, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. And item E, approval of use of council chambers for Viennings Forest HOA meeting, Tuesday, December 19th, 2017, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Here, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight. Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one note. I know we just approved the consent agenda for the use of council chambers on the 12th for Ward I meeting. I overlooked that the city is hosting the Cobb Municipal Association for their last meeting that evening, and so I'm not going to be having a meeting. We'll reschedule that Ward I meeting for sometime, the first couple of weeks of January. And the other thing, I just wanted to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec Department for what a great job they did with all the lighting and the tree lighting. If you missed it, it was quite a thing. Santa was on the fire truck and lit the tree from up on top, and it was really something. Our own Richard Garland personally checked each bulb himself. I think there's a million bulbs out there. He's our own Clark W. Griswold. So with that, I yield.
Mrs. Andrea Bluestein.
Thank you, your honor. I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. And now that we're in this mad Christmas frenzy, take time out to enjoy a little bit of life, and I hope that we all can look forward to seeing each other very soon again. Thank you.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming everybody knows at this point that one of our long-term employees, Ann Kirk, retired back a month or so ago, and we've replaced her with a young lady by the name of Janet Lieberman. And congratulations to both of them. I think Ann probably was very instrumental in the application for this. But once again, Smyrna has won the first place in to keep Smyrna beautiful, state of Georgia. It's just amazing to me, if you go into the recycle center, the number of awards that that division has won over the years. But we look forward to having Ms. Lieberman on as a replacement for Ann, and there's a big set of shoes to fill, but I'm sure she'll do a very good job of it. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, your honor. First, I want to also say something about the Christmas tree lighting on Tuesday night. It was fabulous, and it was very well attended. And I want to also thank all the choirs that came out and sang from all the different elementary schools and the youth choir. It was made a fabulous event. And so I wanted to mention that. And then there's also things going on this month, a lot of things. Aunt Fanny's Cabin has, Santa is going to be at Aunt Fanny's Cabin at numerous occasions, and if you wanted to look at the website, you could see. But I could also say 6 o'clock, let's see, it's Friday night. I'm sorry. I had it up here. Okay, there we go. Can we go back? Okay, there you go. Thanks. Okay, sorry. I'm borrowing Tammy's computer and it, I'm not used to it. So sorry about that. But so December 8th and 9th, Santa will be at Aunt Fanny's Cabin from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And on December the 15th through the 17th, he'll be there from 6:00 to 8:00. And again, on December the 20th through the 22nd, he'll be there from 6:00 to 8:00. And the only time he's not going to be there is on December the 10th. And then other things that are going on, sorry. Thanks. Okay. So on December the 9th, at 5:30, there's an ugly Christmas sweater, block party, and movie night. And I believe that's taking place near the library. Is that correct? And that starts at 5:30 on December the 9th. And then on December the 16th is brunch with the big guy. And also on December the 15th, going back a day, Christmas at Broner Hall, and it's the Coat Drive Holiday Festivities and Movie is a Christmas story, and that starts at 5:00. And let's see, is there? Okay. And then if you wanted to, oh, isn't the library having a Friends of the Library this coming Saturday, the 9th? Okay. Friends of the Library Party at the library on December the 9th. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Snoller.
Thank you, your honor. Two things tonight I'll report on. One, as a reminder, is we're now in the holiday season. Obviously, a lot of people now shop online and have deliveries made to their home. And something particularly from our police department is, if you're having a package delivered to your home, and it's going to be sitting on your front porch, well, guess what? Everybody else knows you're having packages delivered to your home. And so to prevent theft, you really need to either have your neighbors or have those delivered to a different area, because folks are, this time of season, out there looking for those packages. So just as a reminder to folks, if you're going to have a package delivered, give it to your neighbors and make sure they pick it up for you if you're going to be out of town. We've had, unfortunately, some incidents that have already occurred this season. And I just want to make sure folks, you know, take a little precaution and be aware of that. Second of all, hopefully, this is a good omen for the application that we're doing on the trail. Just today, the Atlanta Regional Commission announced that we won a $300,000 grant for a transit feasibility study. We put up $100,000 for, and that was announced officially today. So it's a good omen, hopefully, for Smyrna and its other grants that we're doing for future studies and other things we're doing in the city. But that's all I have to report, your honor.
Mr. Ron Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to piggyback on the public safety warning. I think the police department, all of the police departments in the metro region are reiterating the clean seats program. So try not to leave any valuables. I know it's common sense not to leave any valuables within sight, but a lot of these kids are using the opportunity, crime of opportunity during the season, checking car doors. If it's open, they're going to go in and take whatever is available. Your garage doors, for many of our neighborhoods, we get so relaxed, comfortable, and familiar with our surroundings that sometimes we'll leave our garage door open for an hour while we've gone to the grocery store or something. Those are opportunities. We don't want to give an open invitation to those folks who want to do us harm. A couple of things. I want to just recognize and thank Kristen Robinson in our finance department. We don't have a formal finance report this month, but she will be recovering during the month of December from some elective surgery. We're just going to be thinking about her. She's still working while she's away from the office, trust me. So I still get emails on a regular basis. I want to commend again the mayor for starting the mayor's educational orders, the mayor and council, recognizing these future leaders in our community is one of the more important things I believe we do as a city, and tonight was a perfect example. The talent, the energy, the intelligence, and the commitment to the city of Smyrna and our school system, working together to help nurture the next generation, was a very positive thing to see. Mr. Norton has already mentioned the CMA Annual Meeting coming up on the 13th. That's just for city elected officials, and I thank him for being a part of that. And finally, I want to just remind anyone out there who is watching, who may not have already voted early, that tomorrow is Election Day. Our turnout numbers for these elections, especially for runoffs, is less than stellar, I'll put it that way. And if just one more person voted, I think we're the better for it. I encourage you to talk to your friends and neighbors, and urge everybody to participate. That's how we win, when we all participate. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Sall, do you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Andrews, anything? Mr. Cochran? Ms. Graham? You can say it again. Yep.
Yes, again, I'd like to remind everyone that it is Election Day tomorrow, and we have been voting, advance voting, for the last two weeks in the community center and at the Cobb main office. Tomorrow, the community center will be open, and six of our precincts will be open. The six precincts and the community center will vote for the senate District 6 seat. And in the community center only will be the Ward III seat, our Ward III seat for our council member. So everyone, please go out and vote. If you have voted in the first election, you can vote in this runoff election. So please take your right and vote for the people that you want to in the seats. Thank you very much.
Show cause hearing. We do not have anything, citizens' input. We got one person that's signed up, Lenny Moore, 3818 Cliff Crest Drive. Her topic is hands-free ordinance.
Hi. I mean, I'm sorry to inject a negative comment. Thank you, first of all, for listening to me and the council and the mayor. It's very festive, and I know we're talking about elections, so it's kind of sad that I'm here to really speak in opposition to something. I'm here about the hands-free ordinance. I did hear from Terry that there's already been a public meeting about it, which I'm sorry I missed, but I did see it and I read it. And of course, the draft that I have seen is what I'm referring to. Firstly, my primary reason and concern about this ordinance is because in the text of the ordinance, there are assumptions that, according to my research, are unfounded. I have found no data or published reports that support the ordinance's conclusion that it will make Smyrna a safer place to drive if we ban the use of handheld telecommunications devices. On the contrary, research and published reports show there is no correlation between banning handheld telecommunications devices, and I'm just going to say phones from now on, and a reduction in car accidents. Where research has been conducted, it has shown that either there is no evidence to support hands-free driving as being safer, or the evidence is inconclusive. In fact, the National Safety Council says, and I quote, "The issue is more mental than physical. Drivers talking on a cell phone can overlook up to 50% of what's around them while looking directly out the windshield. An activity in the area of the brain that processes moving images is reduced by up to a third when talking or listening to the phone while driving, regardless of whether the driver is holding the device or not. While states which have banned handheld devices have seen a reduction in drivers holding their cell phones, so have states that do not have a ban on holding cell phones. This demonstrates that drivers are voluntarily complying and self-regulating the use of their handheld devices, even in states where there is no ban." But don't just take my word for it. Watch the August 20th, 2015 TV program Mythbusters, titled, "Is Hands-Free Cell Phones Used Safer?" You can watch the video online. The program's conclusion is, no, it does not. This is because a distraction is a distraction is a distraction. It is a head problem, not a hand problem. We all know how difficult it is to hear two conversations at once, and I recently heard an NPR report by scientists that said, when you are driving, you have, can I keep going? If you are driving, you are having a conversation with your surroundings. You're getting input about traffic and people and other cars and signs. When you then take a telephone call, you're having a dual conversation inside your head. So you have two conversations going on, and that is just a distraction. A few years ago, I was in a car accident where I saw the car coming to hit me head-on, alcohol-related, but he was holding a cell phone. And when it was discussed, because I was in Connecticut- And when it was discussed, because I was in Connecticut, there was a ban, they said they don't pursue those because it's so difficult to enforce. It requires subpoenaing people's telephone records, and so it usually gets dropped. So when we're driving and we have those dual conversations on, that's what is the danger, not whether you're holding the device or whether the device is secured somewhere else in the car. The second concern I have, so, you know, to sum that up, there's no evidence that having a conversation while you're hands-free is less dangerous.
Okay, you need to sort, can you wrap it up?
Right. The other thing is that I find, I think it would be hard to enforce this law. Georgia doesn't have one, and I think that the bill in the state of Georgia is languishing for all the same reasons that I am proposing to you. So I would just ask you to consider what I've said when you're considering this ordinance, and whether it will really be an effective use of, you know, our city ordinances, and whether it will reduce accidents in Smyrna. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for folks who know, we had decided to put the adoption of this ordinance off until we had a full body, and hopefully, on the 18th of December, we'll have our seventh council member, but I doubt if we'll take this up until the first meeting in January. So at that time, we'll have another public hearing to allow folks to come and make comments. So thank you very much for your comments. Is there anything else? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:29. Terry, here's that thing right there.